I would call this meeting to order. Could you all please rise and join in. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Ledger, please hop's roll, please.
Yes.
Mrs. Elder. Here.
Here.
Dr. Loughlin here.
Dr. Moffa.
Mr. Muse.
Mr. Palmer.
Dr. George.
Mrs. May. Here. Thank you, Mrs. Ledger. It's my duty to inform you that we did hold an executive session this evening at 6:30 PM for the purpose of discussing personnel. It is now time for hearing of this as part one. This is time for anyone in the audience to address the board on anything that is on tonight's agenda. So if you wish to speak about anything on tonight's agenda, please rise, come to the podium, and give us your name and address. Seeing none. I will move for adoption Resolution Number 195, approval of minutes of the regular meeting held February 19th, and the committee of the whole meeting held March 12th. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. We adopt the minutes of those meetings and any discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Solicitors' report, Mr. Nichols.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Legislative report, Dr. Loughlin.
Your report.
Thank you.
I got a call today from the Center for the Association, and I spoke to both Mr. Mears and Mrs. Swiger about it, and evidently Senator Ward is trying to help us with our dilemma regarding allowing parents to wait having a seat on every school bus or every kid. And it's our interpretation here in this district and what we have been told, that if we provide a seat for anybody who passes the qualifications for riding a bus, i.e. distance, et cetera, then we have to provide seats for everybody. And that's why we have so many buses with empty seats riding around the streets, and that's what the public sees and criticizes us for that. And we thought that there had been a change in the way the budget was done regarding paying for transportation and seeking a clarification of what the people in Harrisburg are saying we've always been allowed to do, but we never understood that we were allowed to do it, i.e. ask parents to sign a waiver about keeping those seats. Because if we were allowed to only provide buses for the students who wanted to ride them, we would be able to provide buses with fewer seats, or fewer buses with as many seats. So the School Boards Association has been made aware of that by Senator Ward's office, and they're all going to try to help us, and I ask that whatever happens, even if it's just a directive from the PDE, it should go up to all districts, giving everybody else the same opportunity as we're trying to get.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Education and planning, I will move for adoption of Resolution Number 196 to approve the 2013-2014 school calendar, and a copy has been made available to you in your pack. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution Number 196. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. I will move for adoption Resolution Number 197 to approve the NHSPA agreement with GLSD. Second. It's been moved and seconded. We adopt Resolution Number 197. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. I will move for adoption Resolution Number 198 to approve the curriculum additions for the 2013-2014 school year, and these are at the senior high school. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, then we adopt Resolution Number 198. Any discussion on the motion? Questions? All those in favor, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. I would like to bundle Resolutions Number 199 and 200. The 199 being to approve a dual enrollment agreement with Seton Hill University, and 200 being to approve the teacher education agreement with the University of Pittsburgh at Greensburg.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. We adopt Resolutions Number 199 and 200. Any discussion? All those in favor, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. I will move for adoption Resolution Number 201 to renew a letter of agreement with the Presley Ridge School. Second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. We adopt Resolution Number 201. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That also passes unanimously. And lastly, I move for adoption Resolution Number 202, the revision to the 2012-2013 school calendar. Second. It's been moved and seconded. We adopt Resolution Number 202. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That also passes unanimously. And that ends my report, and I'll give it to Mrs. Elder for findings.
Thank you. The Finance Committee's next meeting will be Wednesday, April 3rd at 10:00 AM in the Administration Building. I'd like to bundle together Resolutions 203, 204, and 205, and move for their adoption. They are the Treasurers' Report, the payment of bills dated March 12th, and the budgetary transfers.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt Resolutions Number 203, 204, and 205. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
And I'd like to move for adoption of Resolution Number 206, to accept gifts, grants, and donations. And while I'm moving in, I'd like to call to your attention the new grant which wasn't part of our list last week when you looked at this. This is a grant of $4,750 from the Pittsburgh Foundation Board of Directors, which was made possible by the Educational Improvement Tax Credit Program of the Community Foundation of Westmoreland County. And we are very, very grateful for all of the grants that we receive, and it's truly wonderful to have that one join the $5,000 grant from the Bagley PTO and decap of the George and Janet Justo Territorial Foundation.
Does that grant be remarked for anything, or can we use it if I will?
Bagley Elementary.
Bagley, also. Thank you.
Second.
Seconded, thank you. Any other questions on Resolution Number 206? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Mrs. Swizer is not here. For property and supplies, or anything, anything to bring up under property and supplies this evening?
Yes.
Student activities and recreation, Dr. Loughlin.
Yes, as a reminder, the winner of sports recognition is Wednesday, April 3rd at 7:00 in the outdoor arena. And then I'd like to update you on the swim team this past weekend. The girls' swim team placed fourth in the state, and the team placed fourth in the med league relay and fifth in the 400 free relay with Maddie Boots, Kayla Owens, Gina DeFrancesco, DeFresco.
DeFrancesco.
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 And Monica Solinsky. And then Kayla Owens placed third in the 200 individual medley, fifth in the 100 breast, and Monica placed sixth in the 100 free. That includes my four.
It's huge to have our team fourth in the state. That is huge.
And Mark has some more updates.
We have, we have nominated some of our teams for awards as they come out, specifically the one I'm referencing here, the YWCA Awards. They're pretty competitive across Westmore County. It's always based on a previous year's accomplishment. And we were just informed yesterday afternoon that I dominated our girls' swim team for their accomplishments last year, and they won the Women's Female Sports Team of the Year. So they'll all be going to a, to a dinner, and they'll give me more information on that. And then I dominated Hannah Green, the female activity of the year. She won, and she actually had won, I didn't know, she won in 2010 also. She was selected again in 2012. Anyone knows Hannah, she's an unbelievable runner, track, cross-country, indoor track. So I thought that was pretty significant, that the Trobe was able to win both the female and the female team of the year award. So, but we recognize that tonight, too. And if anybody has any pool of sunburns, we could use some. If you don't have money, I'll, just throwing out.
You don't want another snowstorm?
No, no. I like to ride around Union Council before the work, it's good old. I'd rather go to some sporting events and watch some softball and baseball.
Well, thank you for making those nominations for this.
Yeah, the parents, I have to tell you, the swim parents did a lot, too. That thing had to be outside activities, civic services, grade point averages, school involvement, a lot more than just swimming. So Mrs. Dowell and her parents really went in depth to help us round out all our information. So it was a big joint effort, and we need to see them later.
Well, that's very nice. Thank you. Community relations, since Dr. Zorch isn't here, I will move for adoption Resolution Number 207, to authorize a letter of support for later community parks and recreation to apply for another DCNR grant for the development of the Lincoln Avenue Trail. Second. It's been moved and seconded. We adopt Resolution Number 207. Any questions or discussion? This is the old train track that runs up along Lincoln Avenue, and it's going to be purchased from Norfolk Southern and then developed by LEPR. So it's kind of a nice thing. All those in favor, then, of adopting Resolution Number 207, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
May I interrupt you, but would you prefer to mention the Park, using here Park work detail on the 22nd to the 28th, so that people understand that's where it all went down?
Yes. Legion Keener Park that was burned last year. It's going to be rebuilt the week of April, the 22nd through the 28th, and they're asking for volunteers. If anyone's so moved to come down and volunteer, they're also asking for donations of money to help pay some of the bills. We have received overwhelming support from the community, different businesses donating materials and nuts and bolts and the whole thing, but they're putting a team together. It's going to be built very much like the old playland was with the community doing most of the work in teams, and they need people to serve lunches and bring water and whatever. So if you're so inclined to help with that, please call the Parks and Rec Office and donate your services, or if you'd like to make a monetary donation, please do so also. Do you have anything to add to that?
No.
Okay.
I don't know about.
It is, it's very nice, very nice. It went so well the first time through, and are sports teams participating, Mr. Mears, some of them?
I just mean, I'll probably see how they want to set up now.
Okay. I know they participated in the past when it was original.
Yes, I'll reference when I set it up.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And we're going to remove Resolution 208 from the agenda, so we will not be voting on that this evening, we're going to table that. The EWCTC Joint Operating Committee, Mrs. Coz, are recorded last week, but they're going to announce for tonight. Thank you. Board policy, PSB and the A's on Mrs. Elder.
Thank you. I will hear the adoption of Resolution Number 209, which is the final reading for policy number 913.1, commercial advertising on school property and on the website.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt Resolution Number 209. Any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor of adopting Resolution 209, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Transportation, Dr. Moffa.
Yes, we need tomorrow at 3:00 PM in the University Conference, we're going to discuss our operating contract. Last week, the 17-page transfer contract, although it's a large one. Just to take a page out of my essay today, my, but.
Is that why you have so many pages?
Pick it up a notch. So, we'll be working on that tomorrow, so anyone's, it should be a spirited session. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moffa. Technology, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, Madam President. The technology meetings from our March 12th meeting are attached in your packet, but of note is that we're making our transition into the glsd.us email prefix, and it has something to happen on or about, on the 2013. So keep that in mind.
Nothing else under technology?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Superintendent's recommendations, Mrs. Swiger.
I'd ask the board to move on Resolution Number 200, which is the resignation agreements listed. I would like to note the six teachers that have sent letters of intention to retirement at the end of this year, to retire at the end of this year. As you read the names, all different areas and areas of specialty within the school district, but obviously, as always, we would like to thank them for their service in years dedicated to the Grand Ole Trust School District. The deadline for retirement is March 31st. There may be some on next month's agenda, but these are the letters that we never received as of this date.
Okay. Would someone like to move for adoption Resolution 200? Thank you. Do you want to hear a second? Second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. We adopt Resolution Number 210. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
Move slack, move.
I do like, I went, Mrs. Swiger said, I see teachers on here who taught my children, and it's kind of sad to see them go.
I imagine kindergarten, graduation, I don't think about that.
Mrs. Hunter.
I would make a special note, not that all, every one of these is special, but Mrs. Hunter sent her letter of retirement in and paper, which I think Mrs. Ledger has had pictures of little students on the top of it. It was the most unique letter in the sense that.
I thought you were going to say you printed it on that yellow.
If you look, and Mrs. Hunter teaches kindergarten, obviously, at LEAS, I'm not sure how many years she's taught kindergarten, but she's been there since I have been here, but I know long before that, and she does such a wonderful job, as all of these people do, but that was Mrs. Ledger, when she got it, she showed it to me, and it was like, so, anyhow.
Thank you. I'd ask the board to move on Resolution Number 211, the substitute teacher appointments that are listed. It's been moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. We adopt Resolution Number 211. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously.
I'd ask the board to move on Resolution Number 212, which is the appointment of Kimberly Marazo as the Bagley Elementary School Principal beginning July 1st, 2013, at a salary of $84,000.
Second.
Do I hear a second? Second. Thank you. And we'll have a roll call, but any discussion? Sorry, did I, Mrs.?
We must be done in school.
But you're so used to the voices that second the motions coming from this side.
It's the testosterone, Paul.
You also have to understand, I'm getting old, and my hearing is, it's starting.
That was the player.
I think the third.
Any questions or discussion on the motion? Mrs. Ledger, we have a roll call, Madam President.
I was the first second.
Who's the second?
She was the second second.
This is she.
I'm not over here.
Okay. Mrs. Elder. Yes. Mr. Palmer.
Yes.
Dr. Moffa.
Yes.
Dr. Moffa.
Yes.
Mr. Muse.
Yes.
Mr. Palmer.
Yes.
And Mrs. May.
Yes. That passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mrs. Marazo.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. And I'd like to ask the board to move on Resolution Number 213, which is to support personnel classified.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt Resolution Number 213. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
And then the items that are listed, you can review on your own. If you have some time, if you look at the art that is around the center here and in the room beside, you all should also have at her desk, the places, a note for the art show, which is tomorrow night and Thursday night. They do make them by school, and tomorrow night is Bagley and Mountain View from 6:00 to 8:00 here, and the pro development tree is Thursday evening from 6:00 to 8:00. So if you have a few minutes, if you'd like to stop by, please feel free to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd love to talk about, I don't know, because the church was very crowded, I don't know if any of the rest of you attended the choir concert at Trinity Lutheran Church on Sunday afternoon, but it was absolutely wonderful. And for the first part of the concert, the choirs were accompanied by or performed alongside the Academy Chamber Orchestra, which was wonderful, beautiful music. And again, we had benefactors, including the school district and the Art Trust, but other individuals, and they were, let's see, I told Mrs. Swiger about this earlier, the Kiwanis Club of Greensburg. We really have a lot of people who want to support the arts in schools, and who are willing to help out a little bit when an opportunity is presented to them. And it's wonderful that our choirs perform in churches because of the acoustics, and they're able to send their voices around. And I go to that church all the time, and they not only teach the kids how to sing and how to sing together, but they teach them how to use the space, because they had one selection where they sent part of the women's choir up in the balcony of the church, and then had two lines of the women standing down the sides, and the voices were literally coming from all around you. It was just wonderful. And my two grandchildren went with me, as did my husband, and at the end of the one selection, the two notes were, it was one phrase with a note, and then another phrase with a note, and those two notes were so beautiful that I got tears in my eyes, and my grandson had to reach up and wipe the tear away and say, "Oh, right now." But for the first time, I think, I've never seen this before, but members of the music faculty joined the choirs and were singing along with them. And I think that particularly ought to note that Ben Murray did an absolutely wonderful job, just teaches them how to perform as a team, and how to rely on each other's talents, and how to take responsibility for what they're doing. Everything we say we want from extracurriculars, and it's in music. It's not just in things like basketball and swimming. But then, when the choirs were coming in, both of my grandchildren said, you know, "There's my music teacher. Why is our music teacher here?" And her name is Lindsay McConaughey, and I didn't know her before. And when Maggie, my granddaughter, and I went up to thank Mr. Murray, Maggie told Mr. Murray that Mrs. McConaughey sings to them in class all the time. So I think that's neat, if reading teachers can read and math teachers can do math, why not have music teachers singing to the classes? It was just wonderful. All should have been there, but you can't believe how the church was so proud, and there couldn't have been more than half dozen empty seats anywhere in the church. And it was just wonderful. Great way to spend an afternoon, and what these kids are learning and what they're taking out into their careers, no matter what those careers will be, is truly what our school district stands for. Great stuff.
Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Anybody else have anything? This is an opportunity now, hearing your visitors, part two, for any member of the audience to address the board on any subject. So if you wish to speak to the board this evening, please approach the podium and state your name and address.
Greg Fiume, Ridgeview Drive by Drive. Excuse me, just a couple of quick questions. Are you willing to let us know how much money we have raised towards the athletic complex? Are you still?
We're still in the process. I think I'm even, you know, the board's right around there.
Still excited?
It's still fine.
Okay. My other question is, on a couple of different occasions, I've talked to a few different board members, and one member said that that athletic complex would be, had no cost at all to the taxpayers, and another board member said that that was never said. If you guys don't raise this $10 million, who's footing this bill? I mean, was it said that it would not be, because I remember that on the front page of the bulletin, claims that. I wish I would say in the paper.
I think what, and I can speak to at least what I believe was said or intended to be said in the tax office and everything, was that there would be no cost, no millage increase for the complex, meaning that no increase in taxes to pay for the athletic bonus complex or the other items.
But if the money's not raised, and we can't balance our budgets now, then there's going to have to be a tax increase for that facility, isn't there? Now, how else is it going to get paid?
Currently, there's a budget line out, and millage sets aside for our debt service, and what we did is a wraparound bond issuance, so when that debt service declines, we'll continue to pay that same amount for an extended two-year period, so there will not be no millage impact because that budget line out will remain the same. Excuse me, will remain the same.
Okay. And are we over/under on budget right now at this point in time?
With the project that's now, my understanding is on budget.
On budget right now?
Yeah. And on time as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else from the audience wish to address the board?
Just so we're clear, absolutely clear with the money. The money's used for three parts: athletics, academics, and arts. Long as you're clear.
Long as you're clear, the money's being divided that way.
Right. But if you got a $10 million bond, and the athletic complex is going to cost $10 million, I went to Lakefront, I'm a pretty good divider. There's nothing left for the other tip.
We raised enough, we raised enough money to get it done.
But do you understand where I'm coming from? I mean, if the project's $10 million, you took the $10 million bond, and the money's gone into three different areas, I mean...
We're there.
It's going to be interesting.
Anything else? Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded, it'll be adjourned. All those in favor, aye. Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you for your time this evening.